Good evening. I'd like to open the Monta State Council meeting for Tuesday, February the 6th. Phillips, roll call please.
Counselor Carey.
Here.
Counselor Johnson.
Here.
Counselor Sharmar.
Here.
Counselor Schinkel.
Present.
Counselor Silvernagle.
Here.
Mayor Milligan.
Here.
That brings us to the consent calendar. Tonight we have two items. The minutes from the council meeting from January the 16th and minutes from the council work session of January the 16th. I'm approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve those two sets of minutes. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
May I make some corrections, please?
You may.
In the minutes for the regular session, it stated that, I said that homeless people can be intimidating, and what I actually said was street people. Kind of a difference there. Street people are on the streets by their own volition, living kind of a bohemian lifestyle. And homeless people are not like that. And then on the work session, on the very last item, Counselor Johnson stated that he wanted a report on why we have such a turnover in the police department. I also requested that I wanted that report.
So, John, you moved.
I accept the amendments, yes.
And Darren?
I do too.
Okay. So the minutes have been moved and seconded with changes. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Consent calendar is passed. Now I move on to the mayor's report. I have one item of business. This last week, I received a resignation letter from Counselor Tom Snaky. And what I'd like to do is ask the council to formalize by accepting that resignation. So do I have a motion to accept that resignation?
I mean, we accept the resignation.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I with regret.
Yeah.
Yes, thanks. And then I have a couple of basically calendar items. Tomorrow night is the State of Cities address over at Western Oregon University in the Smith Auditorium, which is behind the old library. If anyone's been in town long enough to remember where the old university library is, it's.
Music hall.
Music hall.
Yeah.
And then on Thursday, February 13th, the Bike Ped Committee is meeting at the library and taking more discussion about the bicycle campground. And with that, we'll move on to reports from council representatives. And Counselor Silvernagle?
Thanks. I'm on the senior advisory board, met on January 23rd. Got just a few highlights. Steve Moser was there to talk about our deck project and the possibility maybe of becoming an Eagle Scout project, and you know, we saw a couple of materials and that type of thing, but potentially they could provide labor. So, not sure what the process is on that, and Scott and others will have to weigh on, but it was a proposal at least for consideration. There was some discussion about eventually replacing the bus, or I should say, replacing the van with a bus, a small bus of some type. And as I understand it, the Friends has $14,000 for that replacement vehicle. Twelve from one individual and maybe from another that they've accumulated. They did a meet and greet on the 17th, and they had 12 new members show up, so that's pretty good turnout again, because they've been doing those fairly frequently now. I assume, they had a January 31st trip to Walnut Valley Pie Company that a bunch of them were excited about, and I assume that took place at this point, since we're beyond that. And they've moved the Friends meeting now to the third Thursday of the month at 1:00 PM, so that's a change. Next scheduled meeting is February 27th. That concludes my report.
All right, thanks. Counselor Johnson?
Yeah, I wasn't there at the meeting, I was uptown. Anyhow, one thing that I thought was very important, and it's all back to this again tonight on the wetlands, and what we had people from the state and people, local people there too.
Right. Thanks. Counselor Sharmar?
The tree board, the Monmouth Tree Board Met on Thursday, January 18th, under the guidance of our community development director. We learned that there is a fairly large walnut tree near the amphitheater that is in danger of falling, and that tree will be taken down and replaced with a red maple. Arbor Day this year is April 27th, and there will be a spring planting, replacing, hopefully replacing the memorial trees at Monmouth Elementary School that were originally planted to honor two children and a mother who died. We're hoping the principal at the school will be open to that. Also, part of the Arbor Day celebration will be to put a plaque at the memorial, the redwood tree, the memorial tree in Madrona Park. And also, we discovered that there are, thanks to city manager McClure, we discovered there are some dead cedars in Madrona Park that will need to be replaced. And we are hoping to put four or five extra trees at Monmouth Elementary School for shade near the ball field. Our next meeting will be a week from Thursday at 5:00 at Monmouth Elementary School. So if you'd like to be part of that discussion, come on over to the school at 5:00 on the 15th. Thanks.
And Counselor Carey, minute?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the MINET Board of Directors met on January 25th. And a couple of things are, I think, noteworthy to mention to you all. First of all, we welcome to Michael Hicks as a new board member. He replaces Ken Day. As you may know, Ken has resigned from the independent city council and therefore off the MINET Board. Michael Hicks has slid onto that and will do a nice job. Gary Van Horn reported that the Finance Committee, which is an advisory committee to the MINET Board, has, is proposing that they only meet on an as-needed basis and not meet regularly, monthly as they have. His rationale for that was is that the, you know, the company finances are stable and the amount of time required for the staff, for the materials for that quarterly meeting maybe wasn't worth all that went into it. However, the MINET Board asked that they reconsider and consider meeting quarterly, certainly to be available on an as-needed basis, but perhaps they could meet quarterly. That keeps them connected with the company and is a little easier to recruit active members to that. So we're waiting to hear back from them. The sales report indicated that our data services continue to increase year over year, albeit slightly, but nonetheless, there's an increase. We have experienced some losses, and we've talked about this probably longer than we want, or you all want to hear, in video and telephone, the cord cutters and other things. So, you know, that's something we're simply tracking. Management team has talked about that MINET has been at maximum penetration, a virtually maximum penetration within our footprint for the last year, maybe 18 months. And MINET Board has asked that they recalculate and sort of compute the number of total passings that they have, in other words, the number of residences or businesses in, within our footprint that are potential customers, not vacant land, but actual, you know, there's been a fair amount of new construction and new houses developed in the last 18 months. And so we'll be able to get, you know, and after this is completed, sort of a new look at our penetration rate and see what our opportunities are within the footprint that we currently have. So that's just sort of a refresh on that data. I usually report on revenues, that they continue to be a stable, December of 17 was up $18,000 year over year from December of 16. So that continues that slight increasing trend that we're appreciative of. Tom Glugow from Grove, Mueller and Swank, the firm that has done our audits for some time, provided an audit report to the board, and they found no deficiencies in the financial operations. He did highlight that if you compared fiscal year 2015 with fiscal year 2017, so a two-year increase, the net income increase in those two years was $881,000. So a pretty significant turnaround in terms of revenue coming in. That's sort of the good news. The bad news is, is that there's likely to be an increase on the way for cable. The board has asked to delay that decision. We will have to make the decision as to whether, you know, to what degree cable is increased. We are concerned that, you know, as that goes up, that may cause subscriptions to go down, and you know, that's that balance point, and do we need to recover all? You know, and it's all driven by the increase of product and content, so there's nothing else to it. So that will be forthcoming. And the last thing that I want to talk with you about is, again, I think it's a piece of good news. John Cooper, the Finance Director for MINET, has provided a sort of a debt service history. What's the history of the debt service and who has paid that, since the new management team has come online. So if you look at the chart here, and just to remind you, the debt service is paid in two payments, two annual, or biennial payments. One is paid December 1, and the other is June 1. And what you have before you, since fiscal year 2014-15, you'll see what the total first payment was, the total debt payment, $1,276,669. And then a breakout of who paid what in that amount. And then you'll see that the same is true in the middle of the page, that's the second payment, that's the June payment. And typically those used to be a bit smaller, there was a disparate amount between the December and the June, and that's beginning to level out with the new structure. But what I'd like to call your attention to is the decreased reliance that, on the cities, making up the deficit in that debt deficit, and the increased MINET contribution. You can see that on an annualized basis at the bottom. In 2014-15, the total debt was $2 million, the debt service we paid that year, $2,47,864. And MINET paid largely out of bond proceeds that they still had. They paid $793,000 and change, and the cities paid 1.2 million. And now you look at what we're into, what will be the case in 2017-18, and that has flipped. So this is reflective, in my opinion, of good management on the part of the team that's in place at present time. Not out of the woods, obviously, but there's been significant progress made, and it's a very good resource that's giving an indication that there's an opportunity for profitability down the road. So, anybody have any questions on that particular? Oh, and then if you were to flip it over, I'm sorry, picture is worth a thousand words, as Gary Van Horn said. You can see on the top, and it's just displayed a bit differently, you can see what the, in each of those years, you can see the total amount of debt payment that we make, and then the two lines there indicating that MINET contributes to that, and then anything that says debt shortfall, that's made up by the cities, as we're all aware. So MINET's portion is going up, and the city's portion is going down. Tony, that's an update. Hope that's helpful and will be helpful for you as you talk, as people talk to you about MINET.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Question on?
Where's it taken?
Oh, you got it. That concludes my report, Mr. Mayor. All right, thank you, John. Any community announcements? Scott?
Thanks. Here's what I had, interesting discussion today, staff meeting, as of January 1, the state instituted new housing standards, mostly energy efficiency, and the effect of that has been to stop the housing market dead in its tracks, as in no one knows how to meet the new standards. You're actually going to require now completely new redesigned houses, structural changes, different structures to accommodate different levels of insulation, windows, et cetera. So basically, anybody that used to be able to go off the shelf, you know, here I'll use these plans, they can now. So it's going to be a transition for a little bit, we're going to be probably stalled out for a little bit, processing permits from last year, but we're probably not going to get new permits for, we're not too sure how long. It'll be interesting how that plays out. The other side of it, obviously, good for energy efficiency, the downside though, is it's increased costs. So then you go right back to the housing affordability issue, so a lot of things like that are pick and poison, so. So we'll see where that goes. Hywinin9 project, we have an addition on the agenda that we'll get to in a little bit, but on the utility relocation side, we're getting that pretty close on both our water and electric. Following all the ODOT processes is really challenging, because we used to be able to just do stuff on our own, like we can't even let a bid before ODOT's looked at certain things, and if you don't follow everything right, we might not get reimbursed properly. So we've had quite the spin this last week or so trying to get going, but their intent is to get in the ground just in a couple of months. Phone system, we've had a phone system sponsored by MINET for quite a few years. They're getting out of that business, so we're in the process right now of figuring out how to replace our phone system. We need to do that by June 30th, that's when they'd like to be quitting. So what we think our best option right now is actually keeping roughly all the handsets, but then going a different way to back. It'll be a cloud-based system, and have a different provider helping us out with technical issues, but we'll have to deal with that, we're not too sure what the costs mean when we sort through what the new service is going to be. And then just a couple of development notes, we have applications in for the car wash right behind the Dairy Queen, so the little grassy area, right there, the kind of the driveway that goes back in. And also, strange to hear after so many years, but Carl's Jr. has some other applications for the Hywinin9 site. Conveniently timed, so they can have ODOT do the exterior improvements. Yeah, but that'll be coming too.
And did you have a finance report?
Yeah, I can do that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. We already actually talked a lot about this at the Budget Committee meeting last Tuesday, but as far as highlights go, the GEMO fund has some revenues up and some revenues down, and overall property tax receipts are looking fairly good, probably coming in over budget, whereas marijuana taxes, as we've shared before, are coming in a little bit lower than we expected. And so expenditure-wise, library is the only one that's on track to hit full budget and may need a supplemental budget at year end because of their HVAC units. And then the other highlight that I'd mention is that, of course, the MINET bond issue results in some funny-looking percentages when you look at the sewer fund and the MINET fund as far as the percentage over budget, because we did not budget for it, but that's allowed under local budget law too, when you do a bond issue. And the last thing that I would draw to your attention under the urban renewal district, I mentioned that most of the small-dollar costs that have been incurred to date have to do with some minor facade improvements and sidewalk improvement projects. And the sidewalk ones actually relate primarily to a dispute with the contractor who did our Main Street sidewalks, and that one may exceed what we've budgeted for legally, but we have capacity within the full budget to defray those costs. And with that, I would take any questions.
On page three, electric fund expense.
Yes.
On, you know, this is current year budget, how much of that $5 million is a pass-through to Bonneville?
The $5 million in rep in expenditures, materials and services?
Yes, material services and the electric fund services.
Yeah, I'll have to get that back to you.
Eighty percent, ninety percent of it? I'm just curious.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I don't know that off the top of my head.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thanks.
Thank you, John.
I'm going to stay up here for the leave of presentation.
If I could, Mr. Mayor, real quick, just to Counselor Johnson's question, I brought my budget with me, actually, purchase power's $3 million, so that's why I have to file this to the purchase power. And actually, if they're on transmission, 3.4.
Hi, Mr. Mayor, councilors. My name's Chase McCarthy with Gallagher Viva, the HRA Viva Trust. The January 2nd meeting, I understand that the resolution was signed dissipating that, so I'm here to help elaborate on what this benefit is, how it works as part of the health plan package for the city. And I'll be happy to answer questions at the end of that. So we are a nonprofit public trust under HRA Viva Trust. We started in 1990. We're a 550 public entities in Oregon, Washington, Idaho. Our home office is based out of Spokane. Our parent company is Gallagher, Arthur J. Gallagher and Company, but our division is specifically tied to this HRA Viva Trust, which stands for Health Reimbursement Arrangement. It's specific to a Viva, which if you're familiar with a Viva, is a voluntary employees' beneficiary association. It's an acronym found in the tax code, it's a 501(c)(9) part of the tax code, but essentially it allows the funds in this type of account to remain tax-free for the employee. So once they have these funds contributed to their account, it's their personal funds that they can use for any eligible medical expenses, either while they're working, and they can also take it with them if they have remaining funds into retirement or separation from the city. So it's a great account that they can use for out-of-pocket medical, dental, vision, premiums, co-pays, co-insurance, all of the above. And the method proposed for funding is in conjunction with the health plan that they choose, because of the lower cost of premiums, this will allow those employees to be made whole or more whole for the health plan. But it's important to know it's employer-funded program, great benefit to the employees, they can use it now, or they can choose to save it for use later. The balance rolls over year to year, so there's no expiration date on the funds, there's no deadline when they have to submit or use the funds by. The individual determines the investment class that they put their money into, so while the funds are in their ownership, there are 11 different accounts that they can choose to invest those funds into, from conservative to aggressive, very similar to a 403B or 457. Our Board of Trustees are made up of seven public employees elected and serve in that position, they're the fiduciaries of the trust, and they oversee how those investment funds are established, the criteria that are used, and all the decisions made at the trust level. So participants, about 60,000 participants in the Northwest who have an HRA Viva account here. So it's a great program, happy to answer questions, or more specifically, anything that I didn't address there?
Any questions, John?
This is sort of a new term for us, I believe. What's the genesis of these Viva accounts?
Yeah, great question. So Vivas were actually introduced in the 1930s in the tax code, however, not used in this way in the Northwest until 1990, our HRA Viva Trust was established. In 1984, we have a similar Viva trust in Washington only, and it's the first Viva trust of this nature in an HRA format. So we're the first employer-funded public trust like this to be used for health reimbursement accounts. So it's new still to many public entities, but between the Washington Trust and this three-state trust, the HRA Viva Trust here, we have over 1,000 public entities participating in there, and many of them have been participating with us since the early 90s or even back into the 80s if you go into Washington, so.
Is this similar to what we used to think of as a flex account?
It is similar, but there are different elements to this. So the Health Reimbursement Arrangement is something that was defined more specifically in 2003. It has to do with the nature of this account. So a flexible spending account can be used for many of the same things, out-of-pocket medical expenses. It can be funded though, however, by the individual and by the employer, whereas the HRA Viva can only be funded by the employer. Another difference is typically the flexible spending accounts have a deadline or a termination date when those funds need to be used. Use it or lose it, is kind of the term that you've heard.
Yeah, that's what I'm familiar with.
And HRA Viva does not have that, and because of that, it's transportable for an individual. So there's an element of if somebody separates or retires, they can still take this account with them and use this to pay for premiums in retirement, pre-65, post-65. In many cases, it can help employees retire on time, because they have an account to pull from to help pay for those medical premiums or long-term care premiums. And it's not tied to a specific health plan, so that's another factor that makes this different. You can associate the funding to health insurance plans, but it's not linked together with a specific type of health plan, like maybe a health savings account would be, it has to be tied, a health savings account, similar function, but has to be tied to a high-to-debt full health plan, whereas this HRA Viva does not. So if in three years, the city changes the health insurance plan or the offerings, it wouldn't affect the current balance in the HRA Viva in a negative way.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Any other questions?
I have just one question, really, can you tell us a little bit more about when an employee retires? If they have funds in their account, can they use that to pay their Medicare premium? Or does it just, do they just get reimbursed for that?
Yeah, so it is one of the most common uses of an HRA Viva account, is to pay for premiums in retirement. We would reimburse the individual, and then that individual would pay their premium directly. We don't pay directly to an insurance, because if there's a situation where the account balance reaches a zero point, and we can't get a hold of the individual, then there's a risk of lapse of insurance, so we'll reimburse the individual specifically. The other consideration of this is that it can be used for the employee, but also the employee's spouse and their dependents. So it's not only the participant that can use for premiums in retirement or co-insurance or co-pays on those plans, it can be used for the spouse and dependents as well.
Once the employee retires, though, the city's no longer contributing to that account, right? So they have a set amount, and once that's used up, they're on their own.
Correct, yeah, exactly. So one of the unique things of this is there's no individual choice, so an individual can't add their own funds to it, they also can't opt out of it. It's a group-funded health reimbursement arrangement, and that means when you separate from employment or the funding mechanism changes or stops, then whatever's in that account remains in that account, and the only way for it to increase is the investment element to that. The nature of this account is a tax-free account, so any contributions going into this account are tax-free, both to the individual and to the city. Any earnings that are seen while those funds are invested are also tax-free. And when the employee or that participant pulls the funds out, at whatever point that is, whether it's right away, 10 years from now, 20 years from now, it's tax-free. is, whether it's right away, ten years from now, twenty years from now, uh, it's tax-free as well.
Okay, but the employee will have paid taxes on that amount before it goes into the account?
No. It's the five oh one C, yeah.
Okay, so, so they take the money out of their paycheck, put it into the account, and then they, the employee pays taxes on what's left of their paycheck after they...
It doesn't come, it does not come out of their paycheck.
Oh, okay, right, I forgot about that.
Yeah.
Part of the health package, yeah.
All right, good, thank you for reminding me that.
So, and, and one of, one of the benefits of that is because the, the premiums are, are lower and reduced, that this is a way to make the employee more whole.
That's right, it's a benefit, okay, thank you.
Yeah, you're all.
I got one. You say the people, the employees can, uh, invest this money in the, for high risk, low risk, whatever. So, what if it's a high risk and they lose? It must be in the stock market, is that what we're talking about?
It is, yes.
So, if it goes down, they lose.
Correct.
So, it, it's their responsibility, is what I'm saying.
That's exactly right.
We don't, if, even if they work for the city, or the county, or the state, or whatever, and they start losing an R Viva account, that we have no responsibility to help with that.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yeah, and from a customer service standpoint and, uh, participant support standpoint, uh, that's all on the HRA Viva Trust. We have our own customer service in Spokane, so same time zone, they're local, there are people, we don't outsource it to a third party. Um, and if there are questions, whether the person is actively working, or they've retired or separated and they have questions, need help with administration or claims or anything, those come to us to relieve, uh, any administrative duties off of the city or employees at the city. Um, so, that's, that's taken care of by our trust and, and the cost of those, um, fees. The fees are paid for by participant, so, uh, this isn't a plan that costs the city any money. There's no expense to this from the city's family. It's paid directly through participant plan and administrative fees.
Any other questions? All right, thanks.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. So, that brings us to the citizen comments part of the meeting. There's a time reserved for citizens to comment on items that are not on the agenda. Maximum of three minutes per item, please. If you're gonna come up and speak, if you'd come to the table and then write your name and, um, address on the sheet there for us, please. And then state your name and where you live.
I'm Dan Myerick from Monmouth. And I live in the Gentle Woods neighborhood of the park, so I just want to be a quick, uh, reminder and bug in your ear regarding this, realizing there's, of course, the informational meeting next week about, uh, the bicycle camping in Gentle Woods Park. But just standing here again tonight to, uh, speak against that. Um, of course, the, uh, there are some other camping options nearby us in Independence and Fairgrounds. We don't believe that Gentle Woods is the appropriate location for this camping. Uh, the city's received over two hundred and fifty signatures so far, and a petition speaking out against that, and with this following statement, that Gentle Woods Park must be brought into full compliance with Monmouth ordinance that prohibits after-dark habitation, and day-use status only will be retained. So, that is the desire of, uh, over two hundred and fifty people and counting, so I just wanted to briefly remind you of that. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Anyone else wish to speak? Hearing none, we'll move on to the business agenda, and our first item is approval of a liquor license for Urban Deli.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I believe that you guys all have a staff report that I've prepared, uh, in regards to the liquor license application for Urban Deli. Um, I'll go over the summary, uh, just briefly. Uh, the Urban Deli located at one forty-five Monmouth Avenue North has applied for a liquor license. The application is for limited on-premise sales. The restaurant was opened in October of two thousand and fifteen and will continue to serve Mexican cuisine. The applicants would like to serve beer and possibly willing to later date. The applicants have only owned this business and do not have another source of employment. Um, they do not wish to make any remodel or structural changes. They plan on catering to family, um, no real changes to the existing business at all. Through the course of my, uh, background, um, I have not discovered any business disqualifying or negative, um, in any way, shape, or form. There's been only one, uh, police-related call to that business, which was, um, a found property essentially, um, so nothing negative there. Staff recommendation would be, uh, for approval. Discussion is needed by council.
You don't have any questions for Lieutenant Hayes?
Are the hours of operation included in your staff report?
They're on my staff report. And I believe that they are the same. I don't think they're changing their hours.
Pardon?
I don't believe they're changing their hours. They're not on my report. Yeah, I'm sorry, I don't have that.
I, I'm sort of, sort of familiar with the business on it, and I guess it would've been noted if they were gonna go later. So, looking for a motion? I'll move to send the O L C, or send O L C C a recommendation in favor of approving a liquor license for the Urban Deli.
Second?
Yeah, just moved in second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, seems to be saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, same side? All right, that motion passed. Thank you. And the next item on the agenda is to approve the ODOT Highway ninety-nine cooperative agreement.
Thank you. So, as you are aware, we have a Highway ninety-nine that's been talked about quite a bit. This is a long-evolving project. Uh, key thing is just kind of as the project initiated, it was just a simple kind of road reconstruction, a little, really overlay primarily. And then over time, they actually got additional funding, so they started looking at actually doing redesigning the entire, uh, project. And so, at this point, what we're looking at is continuous left-turn pockets, uh, bike lanes, landscape strip, redoing curves, gutters, you know, the crossings, the curb ramps, um, everything all the way through there. So, it's a big project, uh, one of the ones that you recall, we ended up obviously kicking over our, needing to relocate utilities. That's been a, a tricky issue for us. So, uh, last thing we need to do, we got the kind of utility work done. This is a property agreement, basically documents the entire project, and then notes responsibilities through the projects, and then after the project is completed. Uh, key things in here, it's got the project scope, so it describes all the things that we just talked about, uh, contributions landscaping, we're actually having our urban renewal district do landscaping contribution, uh, utility line locations, maintenance of future improvement improvements, and then construction detours. Um, as far as that goes, we're gonna be keeping track of that this summer. You might call it edge work, and so it'll be more the, the edges of the projects, and there'll be more spot and temporary shutdowns. When they come back next year to do the hard paving, then hopefully those will be full shutdowns for, might even be a couple of weeks, so we'll see how all of that goes. Uh, so a couple of key terms in the, in the agreement, uh, we actually are chipping in ninety-three thousand dollars for landscaping. They would have just a very stripped-down ODOT version of landscaping, so we wanted to make that nicer through town. And then we've got fifty-four thousand, we had some of the vestus of water pipes in the ground, so instead of us doing it separately while they're contractors in the job, they'll just do that, and then we'll pay for that work. A lot more efficient to do it that way. And then, um, we got relocations, and the project's complete, uh, we'll take care of the landscaping and then the sidewalks, and then do a little bit of mowing. Um, interesting one that came up through there, we're like, well, how come you'd have a project and then we'd end up taking care of the, you know, the sidewalks and everything? And apparently, that's state law all the way back to when ninety-nine was put in. Uh, so we're just finding out now.
State jurisdiction is curb to curb?
Curb to curb, as they call it. So, anytime they do projects, they, so actually, at one point, they said, um, when, there was an East Street that actually this went over, so at one point, there was a Monmouth East Street, and it went over that. So, we've always had responsibility, apparently. So, now we're codifying that we do, and we'll be finding out, so. So, with that, uh, yeah, they need this agreement to get going on the project, or they're just wrapping up details so they can get started, and I think it's even, you know, a month or two. If there's any questions, happy to try to answer them.
What, what, what kind of percentages of, uh, are we gonna basically get back in the state for relocating our utilities? I mean, they're gonna pay, pay for some of it.
A little bit, yeah, because it, it first was gonna be all our cost. Then they found out that actually some of the work is in our right of way, so they're gonna reimburse us for those, and I don't remember the percentages. I'm not too sure that you've got all that buttoned down at this point. We can get that for you, but I don't have it off the top of my head.
Like twenty, we don't know, or either.
Yeah, I don't know. I couldn't even venture, yeah. But we'll get that for you.
Did you have a question, Ron?
Yeah, I'm, I'm a little bit loath to vote to approve something I haven't read, and, um, we've got this about forty-five minutes ago, and, uh, for all I know, the deed in my house is in here.
I didn't find it.
Would it be, didn't, are you pretty sure?
I didn't find it.
Um, would it be possible to give us a little extra time to read this and go over it before we vote on it?
Possible. Okay, where, where they're looking at, they need a decision by February twenty-one. Your next council meeting would be February twenty. So, if we had a good deal that you could give them an answer at that point, yes, we could delay this. We normally, obviously, wouldn't do this, but they were pushing, so we thought we'd try to give it a whirl, see if you're ready to take that in.
I'd prefer to do that.
Yeah, whatever your pleasure is there. Because they need a decision by the twenty-first, or else seriously, the project would be stalled out.
Yeah. Darren?
So, one clarifying piece, so the ninety-three thousand for the landscaping, I think we were doing out of urban renewal.
Yes.
Correct? And then the, I assume the fifty-four thousand for the water pipes would be water pipe?
Right.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, there's a motion, you can just move on to the next item, and Scott will just back on the agenda for the next meeting.
Right, and that's where everyone's at, and you can find what's on the agenda. Okay, all right. Thanks. And so now we're, um, on to item three, is second reading and adoption of ordinance, adopting a comprehensive plan map amendment seventeen oh one, James opinion of ours. Hang on. I'll go ahead and, and read that for the second reading. An ordinance amending Monmouth comprehensive plan map designation for a certain parcel of real property located in the nine hundred block of Pacific Highway South, known as Assessor Map Number Eighty-four Thirty-One, Tax Lot Three Hundred and Four Oh One, uh, from low-density residential to industrial. And I'm gonna declare it as past the second reading, and that would be ordinance number thirteen seventy-eight. And any discussion on that? Do we need any staff report?
Uh, no changes were made to the ordinance.
Okay. So, again, it'll be ordinance thirteen seventy-eight. Yep.
Okay, I move, uh, ordinance thirteen seventy-eight, uh, for approval, uh, adoption of, uh, comprehensive plan map amendment seventeen dash oh one.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Counselor Silvernagle?
Aye.
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Counselor Carey?
Aye.
Counselor Schenkel?
Yes.
Counselor Sharma?
Yes.
And that passes unanimously. And we'll move on to item number four, the Monmouth Wetlands, local wetland inventory. Director?
Okay, yeah. So, um, Scott just reminded me to note, um, that the Monmouth Local Wetland Inventory originally was in the works of transition of the meeting agenda, but we moved it forward to a later session, so, um, sorry. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, back up here for a second to do the proper reading. Suzanne Duffner, City Development Director of the City of Monmouth. I have a brief, uh, five-minute PowerPoint presentation, uh, to get you up to speed on the Monmouth Local Wetland Inventory, and the work that the, the planning commission has been working on, and then kind of talk about the next steps of the actual adoption of the local wetland inventory. Um, so, this has been a project in the makings for a while. It actually started in two thousand and nine, uh, when, uh, the city hired Eric Henning with Zion Natural Resources Consulting to do an inventory, um, within the Monmouth Urban Growth Boundary, uh, wetlands that were half-acre or greater in size. Um, so it took a number of years, uh, to get through to a draft inventory, and then, um, the State Department of State Lands has, um, jurisdiction in this area of having to actually approve the inventory. So, that's a lot of the work that happened in the middle, that big gap between two thousand and nine and where we're at today. Uh, there were several revisions and changes that, uh, made, uh, as part of that approval process. So, uh, the State Department of State Lands formally approved the Monmouth Local Wetland Inventory just this past June, and, um, so now that's, we're on the kind of next adoption steps that we're, um, trying to complete now to finish the project. Um, so just briefly, some of the reasons why cities conduct local wetland inventories, um, they're designed to increase more certainty in the development review process, and this is something that actually Monmouth bumped up to, um, the city did, at a real personal level, when I believe it was the Monmouth Substation, Power Station that was going in on the south side of town, there were unmapped, uh, wetlands that didn't show up on the very coarse national wetland inventory maps, uh, but still wetlands there, we're still protected, we're still subject to state and federal laws, and it ended in a stop word order, is my understanding, until the wetland mitigation permitting could be worked out. So, one of the benefits of having a local wetland inventory is that, uh, it allows, uh, cities and developers to get out in front of those issues, to try to more proactively understand where they may bump up into these issues and to plan accordingly to either mitigate for that in their projects, and then just to understand the timeline that goes along with those permitting processes. Um, it also helps us make better planning decisions, once we've identified, uh, which wetlands have the highest value and which ones that we need to really avoid and plan around if we can. And lastly, uh, the state card, it's also required by state law that we do this, uh, wetland inventory planning and do the appropriate protections. I'm just gonna go through some of the key findings. There was a whole report document, uh, in your packet, if you're curious, and I wanna go into a lot more detail on that. Uh, the Monmouth Wetland Local Wetland Inventory identifies, again, eight wetlands that are half-acre or larger in size, and these are all, uh, lands that are within the urban growth boundary. So, it went beyond our city borders for planning purposes, we look at the whole U G B. Um, so within that study area, found two hundred and twelve acres of wetlands, and then within those hundred, two hundred and twelve acres, a hundred and forty-six of those, uh, wetlands areas were identified as significant wetlands. Um, so, these were mostly located in the vicinity of the Forks of Ash Creek, so North Fork, Middle Fork, South Fork. As you can imagine, that, that's a logical place for the wetland areas to be located, and those, um, significant wetlands are denoted on the maps that were included in your packet with the bold asterisk star, so that's kind of how we identify them on the maps. So, I did, um, include a, a map of the whole city U G B boundary, the study area. This is the index map, so it's really busy, and there's a lot going on, but, uh, again, within your packets, there are actually sub-map inserts for each one of those, um, areas that zooms in and can show a little more detailed information that's going on. So, there's full fifteen of those map units that you can see. So, again, um, I'll just point to them here in a second. So, then you can see, uh, Ash Creek, you have both Middle Fork, North Fork going into the main center of Ash Creek, and then you've got South Fork of Ash Creek. So, all of these, uh, colored polygons, uh, represent the wetlands that were identified, and the red dots are the actual, kind of, that were done on site. And this map is, too, far enough that you can see the significant wetlands, but again, there'll be a, a little star asterisk where you can zoom in and see which ones have the significant designation. And then just to talk a little bit more about what is a significant wetland, um, for statewide planning goals and rules, these are, um, were required when they're filed. planning goals and rules, these are, we're required to identify which wetlands are significant, and those are given higher protection priorities for maintaining those based on their wetland function. So as part of that local wetland inventory that Eric Henning worked on with the city, there's four main functions they go through, what's called an off-way analysis. And they're looking at wildlife habitat, fish habitats, hydraulic control, and water quality. So the wetlands that have the most number of those functions get the more significant designation. And it's important to note that even if a wetland was undenied by the significance, they are still subject to state and federal permitting requirements, the DSL and Army Corps of Engineers. So this inventory does not really come from having to go through that normal process of, you know, they're building wetlands to get a mitigation approval process and permitting for that. So just to go through a little bit of the adoption process, we've done a local wetland inventory now. What I mentioned, the Department of State Lands did approve the city's wetland inventory due. We were required to give notice to the affected property owners. A letter was sent out in September of last year. We also gave notice to our local watershed council, the Lakeview Watershed Council, and other state affected agencies such as Department of Land Conservation Development and Popeye Plan, notified them as well. And then our next steps will be to formally adopt that local wetland inventory as part of our comprehensive plan, and then adopt a protection program for the management of the significant wetlands that were identified. As part of your packets, we also have a draft element of our comprehensive plan that would do just that. That's called, referred to as the GO5 element. That's a statewide goal that protects natural resources, scenic and historic areas and open space. Along with that, in your packet, you also find the draft ordinance, protection ordinances for both wetlands and riparian corridors. So that's the adopting of protection measures. And we refer to those as safe harbors, if you follow a prescribed set of standards that the state provides. So if you meet those standards, then you're bound to be in compliance with the statewide GO5. So I wanna run through kind of what those proposed ordinances would look like. There would be new chapters in our zoning code, one that applies to wetlands and the protection specifically of significant wetlands. Again, it's important to note, this is not that whole 212 acres of wetlands that we're gonna buy. This is the ones with the bold asterisk by, significant wetlands, the ones that have the higher value and function. So the ordinance would restrict grading, excavating, placing fill, removing vegetation within those wetland areas. It generally allows restoration enhancements, so the good things that you want to happen in a functioning wetland. And there would be a variance process built into the ordinance. So if there were hardship cases where, you know, the new protection measures major property or develop, will there be a process you could go through with Planning Commission review and hearing to address those hardships and grant possibly exceptions to those. Looking now at the ordinance that would protect separate riparian corridors, this only applies to fish bearing streams. So in Monmouth's particular case, this would be the main stem of Ash Creek where it comes into independence, a very small segment of that, and then also the North Fork of Ash Creek. And so it protects measures, an area that measures 50 feet from the top of bank on either side of the stream, there would be no building or removal of native vegetation within that area. And also, there happens to be a significant wetland, it's shown on our wetland inventory map, so it would also protect that portion of the wetland adjacent to the riparian area. So that concludes my presentation. The next steps would be to schedule the actual public hearings and provide notice to the landowners. Both the Planning Commission would have a public hearing and then make a recommendation to the council, and then council would have a second public hearing, of course, after giving notice to impacted property owners and interested parties and make the final decision on that.
Did you say what the, on this map, did you say what the different colors of the, what period of the wetlands marked, what those represent, or is there a hierarchy there? It's hard to read the...
Yeah, that's a great question.
I mean, I think it's probably in the index there, but it's sort of hard to be for certain. And then while you're at that, you indicated those red dots were test sites, is that what you said?
Yeah, sample plot areas where actually had the consultant go out of site and look at soil samples and do onsite work.
And they would determine how often that's flooded and...
Yeah, they're able to...
What's your contact? I mean, I'm trying to figure out what they would...
Yeah, better site-specific information. I should disclaim that I'm not the wetlands expert to be able to tell you exactly.
Vegetation.
Vegetation, presence of water, there's, yeah, so it's like there's several factors they use on determining what wetlands are. So the colors, I just, I zoomed into one of the maps on the overhead. The colors are actually, there's a classification system that's used by wetland scientists to say, you know, what kind of wetland, is it a forested wetland, is it a water, western emergent? So it's referring to those different classifications of the types of wetlands as well.
So the green is forest and shrub, and then kind of the yellow is like shrub, no, sand, what is it? Sand, shrub?
Scrub.
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 Then on a, if we identify, and where this identifies in the end, the high priority wet, or high priority wetlands.
The significant wetlands.
And if those are, you know, within our urban growth boundary and would preclude, you know, certain types of development that could not be mitigated otherwise, is that part, I mean, could that be utilized? Should we decide that we need to expand our urban growth boundary? Because we say we've got, we've got like 30 acres of high priority, Class A, Grade A wetlands. We can't develop.
Yeah, that's a great question. I was just looking for an example of one on the north side of town. So when we do our buildable land inventory for, as part of our residential land needs analysis, there are significant wetlands, and the city has adopted this protection ordinance, then we discount them, we take them out. They're not considered buildable at that point. But the important piece of that is that we have to have an adopted ordinance in place. Otherwise, it's just, well, we think we'll protect them, but we might not. So, yeah, yeah, just for the significant ones, not for the whole, we don't get to deduct the whole 212, which a point was made at the, the Planning Commission held a public information workshop at their January meeting where we invited the stakeholders, property owners, to come and attend and ask questions. And a valid point was raised that, you know, even the non-significant wetlands, where there's a large cost a lot of times to go through that mitigation process that may make them financially not buildable. So, you know, we don't account for that, unfortunately, in this.
Thank you.
To John's point, seems like we're surrounded.
Like the door to this house for Monmouth Valley, yeah.
Having had, having had heard some concerns, I assume, with some, getting some comments from people, do you anticipate that any of the results from this study is gonna sort of yank the carpet out from somebody currently as it sits today? If you understand my question.
Yes, I do. It's a really good question, what are the impacts on the future development and property owners? So the majority of the significant wetlands that are inside the city limits are on city-owned property or properties where the landowners have done wetland delineations, like Edwards Editions. So they're aware that they have these wetland issues. And in that case, it's my understanding, Ms. Olson has some plans to mitigate around them, to not impact those particular wetlands, so...
So this won't change anything for him?
It shouldn't. The ones that are outside the city limits, these protection ordinances only apply to properties inside the city limits. So the protection measures wouldn't apply until the property's annexed and tried to develop. And there are some properties that will be impacted. The extent of the impact to those property owners is difficult to assess when we don't know what their specific plans are. And the first step before they go to develop, say if they were to subdivide, would be to go out and have their own site-specific wetland delineation done. So even though this local wetland inventory is much better information than what they produced at the national level, where they never came over to Monmouth and never, they just looked at soil maps and water feature maps and geography, the Monmouth Local Wetland Inventory maps are still not 100% accurate. So there will be changes to our local wetland inventory as site-specific delineations are done. So, you know, again, it's hard to know what the exact impact will be to property owners until that information becomes available. And I think that's why, a big reason why that variance or hardship process is built into the ordinance, and certainly not to deprive a property owner completely of any value, you know, of their property. Hope that answered your question.
Yeah, you did. And what does that, that appeal process consist of?
So it's, it's a public review process that would go to the Planning Commission.
Delayance process.
Right. And then it could be appealed to the council. So there's due process they can go through.
Any other questions?
I looked at this, and I'm on map 12.
Okay.
This pertains to us, basically, in that WD 150233, that's our, that's our area for the power, out there in the power. Okay, and so what's a PEMC?
So I do not know exactly what that acronym stands for. It is part of the wetland classification that the wetland scientists...
Because I didn't find it on any of the other, I was just asking.
Yeah, and I didn't copy the whole appendices of the study. So I can find out for you what, it's a scientific classification of the type. But I think it's worth noting that the Monmouth Power and Light is not, those series of wetlands on that south side, none of those are mapped as significant wetlands. So this is one of those cases where the state and federal wetland permitting laws apply, but there's no local, right, that we, that you have to, if you can't fill those wetlands, so...
Then I'll move on one more. The next unit over from that, going to the south, the brown is pretty significant wetlands on that, same thing.
Yeah, so are you talking about the 1560...
I'm talking about the WD 090380, okay?
The yellow.
Oh, okay. South of the Power and Light?
Yeah.
Yeah, the minor property.
Mm-hmm.
Uh-huh. Okay, so not significant?
Not significant.
Not significant, and no star or asterisk by. The asterisk will be by the, that WD 090380 number.
Trying to read through...
Yeah, I know, it'd be nice if we had all the research in the world. We do a map just of the significant ones, but it sort of doesn't...
There's other areas with stars and dots and stuff.
There's a lot going on.
Someone was not making as much sense, I guess.
Yeah, no, that's why we're having this work session, so we can all get up to speed, yeah, for sure, on that. Most of them are gonna be on the north side.
Off and road, this one.
Yeah, yeah, up there by North Fork.
So till we, till we approve this plan, basically, somebody's feeling limbo, then they can build on it, can't build on it, held on it, until we approve this plan? I mean, I'm trying to put together...
Yeah. So, so the state has approved our local wetland inventory. So this is the best available information that's used for permitting development process. So if a property goes to develop now, again, they're subject to state and federal laws that exist. And then the local protection of those significant wetlands wouldn't occur until this ordinance.
Thank you. Is, how can the local wet, local wetland inventory and regulations, how can they vary from state and federal, or can they?
How can the local protection?
Could ours be more restrictive?
Yes.
But not, not less. Not less.
Right.
Typical.
Good, yeah.
And again, the key to the significant is, among other things, once you've designated that, that comes outage of local lands inventory allows you to look in other places for those acres.
Any other questions? So next is you'll work towards getting the ordinance put together?
Planning Commission.
Planning Commission.
Yeah, we'll work on scheduling the public hearing to get this for adoption.
Okay.
Yep. Thank you.
And this time, we come to council comments, new counselors. I just wanna thank the counselors again for a really good goal-setting sessions last Saturday. And we should be bringing those out to the public here shortly, right? So at this time, we're gonna do something a little different. We have an executive item that we plan on having in action to take when we come out of that. So we're actually gonna do the executive session now. I'll read this statement. Anyone who wants to stay through the rest of the regular meeting and the work session, you're more than welcome to do that, but after I finish reading the statement, you'll need to exit the building for a few minutes while we do the executive session, and then we'll ask you to come back in. So at this time, the city council will now meet in the executive session for the purpose of discussing labor negotiator consultations. The executive session is held pursuant to ORS 192, top 6602D, Labor Negotiator Consultations, which allows the council to meet in the executive session. Designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience are asked to leave the room. No decision may be made in the executive session. At the end of the executive session, we will be returning to open session and welcome the audience back into the room. And so, again, we'll, this shouldn't take very long, but we'll get you back in as soon as we can. Thank you for your cooperation.
And we'll turn off the...
You have the video scaring.
I'm a...
Turn off, and then we'll bring it, you can bring it, you're ready? All right, I wanna welcome everybody back. Thanks for your patience, fully, to do that executive session. So the first item of business is approval of a memorandum of understanding between the city and the Monmouth Police Officers Association. They have a motion. I'll move the memorandum of understanding between the city of Monmouth, Oregon, and the Monmouth Police Officers Association. It's been moved and seconded to accept the memorandum of understanding for the Police Officers Association. Now, all those in favor, if you can try by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? All right, that passes. All right, that passes, and then we have the second memorandum of understanding between the city of Monmouth and the local union 125 of International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers.
I'll move the memorandum of understanding between the city of Monmouth, Oregon, and the local union number 125 of the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded for the approval of the memorandum of understanding between Monmouth and local 125 of the IBEW. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, that passes, and so now, Janet, did you wanna cover this staff report?
Okay, so I've distributed the staff report that speaks to formalizing the funding methodology for the HRA VIBA for all, all city employees, and now that you've moved to have the two MOUs accepted, the staff report simply outlines the mechanics for, for doing that, and proposes that the non-represented employees receive the same level of HRA VIBA and cost share that is being proposed for, or which has been approved for IBEW. And again, just drawing to your attention that rather than the quarterly payments that we had mentioned at February, or at the January meeting, that administratively for both the VIBHRA program and for the city, monthly is, is an easier mechanism for administering it. And then again, I would draw your attention to the second page, which outlines or delineates all of the individual annual amounts that are proposed for each employee election, depending on whether they're IBW, non-represented, or MPOA. And then it goes on to tell you the financial implications of this decision. Overall, the HRA VIBA plan, based on current enrollment, is estimated to cost $90,575, which when added to the premium, as City Manager McClure mentioned earlier, still results in that $10,000 savings. And additionally, the offset cost of the, the cost share is estimated at around $26,000. And I provided some examples to show you the impacts, depending on employee elections, whether they choose Kaiser Regent's family, which is more expensive to single employee. And so, the staff is recommending that council authorize the funding amounts noted herein for all eligible city employees, and I'll take any questions you might have.
Any questions?
Well, for the sake of educating perhaps the audience, and something that I've learned through this process, would it be possible for you to explain what the, because we're changing plans sort of mid, mid-contract, would it be possible to explain, you know, one of you, one of you three, and maybe it'll be all of you, what's requiring us to, to give to what appears to be a pretty generous plan?
Yeah, so the idea, statutory and base with, with how you work with unions, there's a collective bargaining agreements, and there's state, there's rules of how to govern those, and so typically, when you're in a midterm state, which we are, you have to essentially come up with an equivalent plan, so instead of just saying, hey, great, we can save a bunch of money, that's really not on the table, you have to get to some level of, we still think that's fair on the whole, or at least, you know, at least a little bit better, just to make sure you don't get tied up. One thing we deal with is, you know, possibly more flexible with, with the IBW, that's a strike permitted unit, with, with the MPOA, the police, that's got an arbitration set up in there, so they can actually impose things on you, so we approach it from a point of trying to get everybody on the same table. In this case, it's a good plan, I think it's, it's very good for the employees, I hope they'll be happy with it, but also kept that labor harmony in our organization, so this is where we went, didn't really have an opportunity to get a big budget saving.
And it's coming up now midterm in the contract, because the city's insurance plan has changed.
Yeah, so that was the trigger, and then we had to respond, and then, then you get to kicking all the rules and procedures that go with doing all this business.
Thank you.
And I guess I would just add too, that it's not necessarily anything new and different, it is what a lot of public sector employees are going to when they're paying, when they have premium situations, or not premium health plan situations, where there's quite a bit additional out-of-pocket or higher deductibles, as these new plans have relative to the old plans.
All right, any other questions? Looking for a motion?
I move approval of authorizing the funding for the HRA VIBA plans for the city employees as specified in this memorandum.
Mr. Mayor, I can, for the record, this memorandum referring to the memorandum of February 6th, from Janet Voluntary and Forries Beneficiary Association, of reimbursement arrangement plan established for the funding, that's the memorandum number two.
Thank you. Second?
Sorry.
And any further discussion? Hearing now has been moved and seconded, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, like sign? All right, that passes unanimously. And now we'll look for a motion to adjourn this meeting, and then we can move to work session.
I move adjourn.
Second.
Been moved for adjourn, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.